Good to have you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Mayor Virchell.
Here.
District One, Morsette.
Here.
District Two, Yaku.
Here.
District Three, Bernard.
Here.
District Four, Wyland.
Here.
District Five, Hoggatt.
Here.
District Six, Vanslow.
Here.
At this point in our agenda, we take comments or suggestions from citizens present on any issue that's not on the agenda tonight. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the council? Again, I'll ask one more time, anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the council? If not, consent agenda.
To approve the public hearing and regular meeting minutes of August fifteenth, two thousand eleven, and the special meeting, and closed session minutes of August thirtieth, two thousand eleven, to approve claims for payment in the amount of six hundred seventy-six thousand, seven hundred twelve dollars and eighty-four cents. A detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of eight regular operators licenses for the period September seventh, two thousand eleven, to June thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, and the issuance of five temporary operators licenses to be used September twenty-third through twenty-fifth, two thousand eleven, at Saint Patrick's Fall Festival, and the issuance of two temporary operators licenses to be used October twenty-first, two thousand eleven, at the CCH Annual Wine Fest. Additional operator license information is available in the Clerk's office on request. To approve the issuance of a temporary Class B retailers license to Saint Patrick's Church to sell beer and wine September twenty-third through twenty-fifth, two thousand eleven, at their annual fall festival at fifteen hundred Vine Street. To approve the issuance of a temporary Class B retailers license to the Christian Community Campus Foundation Incorporated to sell wine October twenty-first, two thousand eleven, at their annual wine fest at thirteen twelve Wisconsin Street. To approve the issuance of a taxicab driver's license to Robert S. Anderson through June thirtieth, two thousand twelve. To approve the issuance of an amusement device owner's license to Gary D. Anderson doing business as Twin States Music, nineteen eleven O'Keefe Road, and permits for eighty-six various amusement devices located in businesses or restaurants throughout the city. To approve the appointment of Adrian Humberto Gomez Guzman as the liquor license agent for La Fiesta Mexicana in Plaza ninety-four. To postpone the client agreement with RBC Wealth Management as a city investment advisor and to authorize, just to postpone that. To approve the appointment of the Finance Officer, Neil Soltes, and the City Administrator, Devin Willey, as alternate members to serve on the two thousand eleven Board of Review and succeeding years until rescinded by action of the Common Council. To approve the homecoming parade for Wednesday, September fourteenth, two thousand eleven. To place and file the quarterly reports of the city clerk, library director, Parks and Public Works Director, and wastewater director, and the August twenty-third, two thousand eleven, minutes of the Community Access Board, and the August seventeenth, two thousand eleven, minutes of the St. Cray EMS Commission. That is all.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Wyland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
Our first item of business is on the Planning Commission, request of Stephen Kinney to rezone eight oh six Hagan Street from Office District to RM one, multi-family residential district, to amend the two thousand thirty master plan map, uh, map land use designation from general commercial to medium-density residential, located at the southwest quadrant of Hagan Street and Crestview Drive, ordinance number sixteen dash eleven. Mr. Darnold.
Committee recommendation is to approve the rezoning request by Mr. Stephen Kinney for rezoning the property from Office to RM one, multi-family residential district, and to amend the comprehensive plan of land use designation from general commercial to medium-density residential. Rezoning does require approval of ordinance, ordinance sixteen dash eleven addresses the zoning amendment, and also the comprehensive plan amendment. You have a choice of first reading tonight or to suspend the rules and consider the ordinance this evening.
I'm going to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Move to adopt resolution number sixteen dash eleven.
Second.
Just to be clear, ordinance.
Ordinance, sorry, yeah.
There's a motion, a second. Discussion.
It seems like this is a logical use of property adjacent to similar properties, and I don't see a problem with taking the change to the plan at all.
Anyone else have any comment? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're done? Okay. Review bids and award contract for two thousand eleven pathway improvements project for White Camp Park and Lakefront Park. At the, Dennis, you want to come up and explain what we have there? I think everybody's seen that our council, our Finance Committee approved Phase One and the Lakefront Park, if I'm remembering properly.
Correct, Mayor, the project was bid as a base bid, which would be the northeast part of White Camp Park and three alternates. Alternate one, the south part of White Camp, alternate two, the northwest part of White Camp, and alternate three, Lakefront Bathhouse portion that has had erosion going on. Had four bidders on the project, and depending on the items chosen, it determines the low bidder on the project.
For the entire council finance, we talked about not doing alternate one or alternate two. I'd like to propose we look at the whole thing. After I thought a little bit about this, it seems like we'd be not completing the project. I know we wanted to wait to get input from our park board, but I think just doing the base bid kind of leaves it incomplete.
The park board has been looking at these trails for quite some time.
Okay.
So I would also encourage, based on budget, that we are able to do the whole project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The reason that we hesitated on approving alternate one and two was just that the park board has not seen the bids that have come back. It's only, I'm not sure what your, the board was expecting to see as far as cost, but we didn't want to exceed what you had planned to spend on the paths, thinking maybe that you had money designated for something else.
Yeah, and I don't have those numbers right, right in front of me.
Original budget was fifty thousand. There is money available in the park dedication fees with the original.
So it's going to be more like seventy thousand.
So it's about twenty over. Would that be close?
Yeah. So that was the reason we hesitated a little bit.
We have two choices, to take it back to park and have them re-review because it is twenty over, or...
Approve it now.
Yeah.
And you're our park board representative, correct?
I am. I don't, I don't answer for the entire board, obviously, in there, but the, I know that they had very much wanted to do this project.
We have to do the base bid, correct, because that's the way it was.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Well, I, I, I understand the point of the Finance Committee, but I tend to agree with Alan that if, I was not, when I first read it, I thought that the alternate meant we were going to do A, B, or C, and I didn't like the idea of just doing part of a trail. So if the motion is going to do, to be, to be just to do part of the trail, I'm not in favor of it. If it's to, if we could just do Lakefront Park by itself and we wanted to wait on the trail, I would be fine with that. So in my opinion, it's either go back out and rebid just for Lakefront Park, or do the whole thing and do it right, or, and, you know, or don't do it at all. So I just think having one trail to go to a, to the, from a street to the swing set is useless to me personally.
And you said that we have undesignated funds in the...
The park dedication, there are funds available in the park dedication fees, should you choose to use them.
Right, and at this point, we don't have a lot of other projects sitting on the table.
The breakdown that I would be with thirty-five thousand for capital bonding for the Lakefront Park Bathhouse, and then the rest would come from those dedication fees down there.
That would come from Zone A, correct.
And then, then we're twenty-five thousand over on the White Camp total trail, so we'd have to take twenty-five thousand from that zone. So there'd still be about a ninety thousand dollars left in the fund if we completed this project.
Each of the funds, Neil has the numbers, but each of the funds has over a hundred thousand dollars.
It's one sixty-three and one thirty-one.
Right, so if we took thirty thousand from one fund...
Both will still have over a hundred thousand dollars.
I'm, I'm just, I...
I would like, and I would like to encourage the council also to complete the project and approve the, approve the bids. And I believe that if we can get feedback, those are, you know, those are the best bids we're going to get at this time for those projects.
Another thing you could do, Mayor and council, if you're concerned about the park boards, you could approve it all contingent upon our court approval.
I think one of the questions, Lee, was...
Get the ball rolling.
No, it's kind of a one-way deal.
Are there any, are there any pending or future programs in the Park District which would be a better use for that money that you know of? The amount of money beyond what was forecasted for it?
Right, not at this time.
That you know of?
Yeah, that I'm aware of.
And that was one of the concerns.
Is this going to have some erosion control for Lakefront Park?
Correct, that's the other piece of it. The, the reason the cost for Lakefront is higher than the budget is we designed it to hopefully be a more permanent solution. Reinforced concrete with some sheet piling on the riverside, tipped back, so the water's not going to continually run over the edge.
Lee, challenging your assertion, I don't recall, over, because I was the last representative on the park board, them ever talking about these paths. The one concern that I brought up of finance was the shelter being retrofitted for a heating, warming house for a future ice rink. That was talked about quite a bit, so in answers to Rich's question, that would be the next expense up there.
Do we know the cost of that type of expense?
Wow.
Okay, so...
I mean, and that's been on the board for, I don't know, how many years?
So if there's ninety thousand dollars left over from, from doing this, and we have construction being built over in that area still, homes are being built, we have projects coming in to, to the, to some of the, part of the business part goes towards that too, right, not the whole thing, but part?
I believe since the first year, we've had seventy-some thousand dollars.
So it's not like this fund is going to be done and we don't continue collecting. We, we build it back up to do more projects.
And, and to answer your question about the trails, the trails have been the focus of our, a number of meetings, talking about how to finish up the trails. We haven't talked about the warming house recently anyhow, but, and, and Mary is correct.
That's where the questions came in finance.
Yep.
There is a concern I would agree with too, that how we're going to plow, pave to plow these trails if we do them in the winter, but...
You?
I think the most, well, I'd plow them if anyone wants to pay me, but I think the most useful trail, if we're going to plow, would be the one that goes up to the sledding hill, I don't think is necessary, and that have to plow all the trail. Because people don't use, well, I shouldn't say that they don't use a swing set in the winter, but I would say is of little use, where the sled trail would be of maximum, maximum use, and so the cost of plowing, to me, could be minimized by just plowing a big trail to the sled hill.
If you'd like, we, I can take back to park board a request for how the trails have been maintained in the winter, and bring that back as informational for council.
Is that park open here around, right?
Yeah.
I would say you do it long or none. Because you're going to have that.
That's a topic for another...
Yeah, right.
But I can take that as an informational request, if you'd like.
What's your pleasure?
Can we approve Lakefront to start with, and then?
No. No, because you have to do, that's my problem, is you have to do the base bid of White Camp, which is that one trail from a street to a swing set and Lakefront together. Or you go out and rebid just for Lakefront, which is going to cost money because you have to start fitting all over again.
I will make a motion for approval as presented.
Did you say, to who, which contractor?
Yes, we had made the recommendation to use Zappa over Pember, because of some of the issues that we had on Eleventh Street and the Crestview Project. So I think it was fourteen hundred dollars, roughly fourteen hundred dollars more.
I'll make a motion that we accept Zap, accept Zappa's bid for this project.
Second.
The total, the total?
Yep.
The total base, one thirty-two, three?
Correct.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Review bids and award contract for Grand View Park Storm Sewer Improvement Project. You're on, Dennis.
This one's more straightforward, there's four bidders, and the low bidder, lowest responsible bidder is Zapper Brothers for forty-four thousand dollar, forty-four thousand eighteen dollars. There was sixty thousand dollars budgeted out of impact fees for, for this project.
Want to give us a short, what we're going to do there?
Yeah, there'll be, there's an existing storm sewer that leads out of the parking lot into the woods, north, northeast of the play area. People probably don't know that, there's a storm sewer that empties out in there, and there's a, a dry creek bed that erodes and causes erosion down into the wetland to the north. So this will create a sediment basin in the woods at the end of the existing storm sewer, and then have an underground pipe storm sewer that leads out of that to the wetland, and to help prevent erosion in that creek bed.
You've been talking about this for a couple of years, too.
And we have the sixty in the budget already for it?
Yes. We had projected sixty. Yes.
I'm going to approve the low bidder, Zapper Brothers, at forty-four thousand eighteen dollars.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve, requests for designation of, as community events. Evy, you're on.
Great, thank you. Evy Nervin here on behalf of the Celebrate the Holidays Committee and the Hot Air Fair, asking for designation as community events for the pre-holiday activities in downtown Hudson and the Hot Air Fair. The Celebrate the Holiday Committee events are Light Up Night, the traditional Friday night evening of Santa coming to Hudson to turn on the Christmas lights, November twenty-fifth. A candlelight stroll, which is a downtown Hudson invitation to come to see the lit luminaria throughout the downtown area and go for a carriage ride Friday night, December second, and reindeer in the park when Santa and his reindeer and lots of other elves and activities come to Lakefront Park on Saturday, December third. All three events are supported through donations and investments from the City of Hudson businesses within the Hudson community, and it's coordinated in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce and done as a community volunteer project. The Hot Air Fair is going to be February third, fourth, and fifth. That event is coordinated entirely by volunteers through Hudson Hot Air Fair, Inc. This year's theme, or it's a New Year's theme for two thousand and twelve, is Chinese New Year, the Year of the Dragon. We're just about on the Chinese New Year. It was actually closer in two thousand and eleven, but it was the Year of the Rabbit, so rabbit, dragon, we went with the dragon. So it's officially January twenty-third, but we'll be celebrating February third, fourth, and fifth with lots of activities in Hudson, and we invite you to attend and ask for community designation of all of these events because it complies with the city requirements concerning vendor licensing and coordination with the city.
Is there any, anybody have any issues or like to make a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Danny, could you get that door on the, that, one needs to be open, I think.
David, why don't you leave that one open, Danny, I'll get this one. Thanks.
Thank you. Update on projects.
Just starting at the top of the list here, Second Vine Street, that work was completed on Sunday, August fourteenth, and it'll be the first order of business when they do the mill and overlay project, when they bring the milling machine back in. As you probably are aware, there, a lot of work is going on on Hanley Road between Nemecoggin and O'Keefe, and on Cooley Road with the removals, and the subcontractors actually started pouring curb and gutter today on both of those streets. Aspen was closed at Hanley, I've asked them to keep at least half of that open for access. Residents might have been a little surprised today. It was closed for a while. And we talked about Grand View, Lakefront, and White Camp. Locust Street, the curb and gutter repairs we talked about at Public Works Committee, and had two estimates, one for a more of a temporary repair, and one for reconstructing the entire street, and I believe was decided to, it's also going to be addressed as part of the Vine Street feasibility study and downtown drainage improvements, to include it with that as a more comprehensive analysis. I think Tom has it pretty well buttoned up right now for the fall and for the winter. Private developments, the primary one that has activity is Walgreens going with construction right now, and they are almost done installing storm sewer and, and made a connection to the existing storm sewer today. So, is there any questions?
Do we know, when is Ash Street going to be?
Ash would be, I don't think there's any removals on that street, so it's just going to be mill and overlay. There won't be any concrete work, but that's about two weeks out.
Two weeks out?
Give or take.
Cooley Road, as far as the mill and overlay will start approximately?
That also is about two weeks, you need to get the, they have quite a bit of concrete work to do, they started on the east end and are working west, so they have a fair amount of work there yet.
So it'll be a couple of weeks. Okay?
There should be a lot of activity the end of September for the mill and overlay project.
Anyone else have any questions for Dennis? Dennis was hard at it today, I saw him out on a job site.
Couple hats.
Yep, double hats, yep. Okay. New business. We have a claim to dis, we have a claim denial for Dan Crowell.
Move to suspend the rules.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Morsette?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution nineteen dash eleven, is there a motion?
Move to adopt resolution nineteen dash eleven.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Next item on the list, to consider amending the assessment agreement with Accurate Appraisal LLC to change the completion date for the two thousand one valuation, revaluation. Mr. Darnold.
Work on the assessment revaluations continuing. Unfortunately, it's been delayed approximately one month, and the request is to extend the contract for thirty days. You already have no option, we still need to schedule open books and board a review, so I'm recommending that the agreement be extended for thirty days or until October thirtieth of two thousand and eleven. I did talk to Nancy, she said due to the delay, the initial advertisement or notice for open book and board a review schedule needed be renoticed, so there's that cost. We're suggesting that cost be paid for by Accurate Appraisal, and one method of achieving that is just not paying them their, deducting that from their contract amount. Secondly, Kathy and I talked about providing an additional monetary damages of X number of dollars per day if the contract would need to go beyond October thirtieth. Hopefully that does not happen, so I, Kathy may want to discuss that also, if you, in judgment of Accurate Appraisals, till the whole process finished, I mean, we may end up with a very, very good job. We just don't know that yet, because we still got to go through the fieldwork completion, do the assessments, go to open book, and then, and at the end of that process, we'll know how good a job Accurate, hopefully they do a good job for us. It was our objective to have this completed by the end of this month for budgetary considerations, we did visit with Devin about that. It's not into the world, if we don't have it done, could we use some of the state revenue, state revenue department estimates for equalized value? And Devin may want to explain that a little bit further to you.
Well, basically, too, we're, have very strict limitations on, we'll be looking more so at the tax levy than we will be what the valuation is, because that will be what it is. We'll be more looking at what the tax levy was last year, and we're very restricted as far as any increase that we could do anyways, so. So the number isn't as important this year as it is and has been in some other years.
Can I ask a quick question before Catherine? In layman's term, what's the delay?
Well, there's been a couple of delays, one is that they were not using Market Drive, our program for assessments, at least the current edition. We use Market Drive two thousand and ten, they were not using that, so we tried to get them up to speed to use our program. And that, some of that computerization work that was required to do that was delayed a little bit. And I, you know, overall, I, I think they were late and probably underestimated the comprehensive nature of the City of Hudson real estate, our properties. I, you know, we have a very complex, you know, compared to other communities, we have a, quite a complex community as far as the number of properties and a variety of types of properties that fit our community.
And the reason to come back is we're amending the contract, and we thought we should come back to council to approve that, extend it to thirty days.
At what point does it become critical and stop our ability to finish our budget?
Again, because we'll be looking more at the levy than we will be at the assess, we need it really by December first, technically. We have to have the number before we issue the tax bills.
Right, that's what I was asking.
And we don't approve the budget until the second meeting in November, so if they're done by the end of October, there'll be plenty of time.
Thank you.
That's where we feel more comfortable with extending it for the thirty-day period.
So they have not technically breached their contract?
Oh, yes, it's, this is, they were, what was the original deadline?
Well, technically, well, technically, they had to have all the work done by October first, under what's going to be required for open book...
Right.
And board a review, that is, and we cannot legally schedule that now without going beyond the October first date. It'll only be a few days, but regardless, technically, it should require amendment to the contract.
Disappointing.
Well, I'm disappointed as much as anybody, Randy, so, and particularly Liz Mullane, who's our technician, so.
So is it reasonable, I'm looking at the staff recommendation, A, is a monetary penalty per day?
Well, I did, I mean, the basis for that was, we have had that in a previous contracts with Bomar, if they can't meet the deadline for board of review, that it's a per-day penalty, and I just thought, well, we don't want this going past October thirtieth, certainly.
So can we agree on an amount?
Well, I just pulled, asked, I need to pull the...
Previous contract, a hundred and fifty dollars per day.
Hundred and fifty a day, that's what I, I don't have a magic number, but that's what the penalty's been in, was in two thousand nine in the Bomar contract.
And the reimbursement of the cost for future public notices?
Yes, both. I mean, I think they should bear the, the penalty only goes into effect if they don't meet the new deadline, but we want them to, and this provides a little more incentive and...
Was it in the original contract?
No.
A penalty? No.
No.
So essentially, the only cost they're incurring is the cost of republishing the...
Right.
Yeah, the penalty would, would, again, is Karen, to reiterate, Catherine, it only takes place if they don't meet the new established deadline.
Yeah, that's a condition of the extension, which they're asking for, and the council doesn't have to give it, but...
Kind of, we don't really have a choice.
No, you don't, but you're trying to give them some incentive, and, you know, they are behind on their timeline under the contract, so they don't pay anything, any penalty, other than the publication costs, if they meet the new deadline.
We should make this stiffer fine. I don't know if that would light a fire under them, and then we'd get less of quality work, or, because they're trying to hurry up, but this, to me, it's unacceptable.
So what would you recommend we do?
Two hundred and fifty dollars a day. I don't know if that's too much, excessive?
Well, I think we have a, a history of an amount that the city's used in the past, relatively recently, two thousand nine.
I don't think we've been in this position before either, in particular to this.
No.
Is there a legal precedence, as far as you're aware, of what fines are reasonable?
No, I know of none. It's a matter of contract.
Danny, do you have any doubt that they'll be done by October thirty-first?
Thirtieth.
Thirtieth, excuse me.
October thirtieth, again, now, like the agreement established, and I believe there's going to be a public hearing, no, submitted to the paper next week, that, new dates. Nancy maybe even signed him off, October-
Twenty-fourth, I think.
October twenty.
Open book the first week of October and board of review October twenty-fourth is what.
Correct.
Trying for.
And I believe all the technical issues that did contribute to the delay have been resolved.
Yeah, the commuter, computer system is up. They're finishing, they'll be finished their fieldwork this Wednesday. So I, you know, I have to believe that they should be able to accomplish it, Randy.
What was the value of the original contract?
Over two years, seventy-five thousand. They agreed to allow us to split the cost, a half of it. First year's revaluation, second year's a maintenance contract. They allowed us to pay a certain percentage of the first year after January first, so we could split the cost over a two-year budget consideration. So we're paying them some, thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars per year.
Or two, three?
Pardon?
Two or three years.
Two years.
It's two years.
But the balance is, is for this year is payable right after January first, and then we pay, and then they can submit for, for their maintenance work as that goes on, so. So they did, were very obliging to allow us to split the cost to help with our budget considerations.
But if they've reached the contract, we could end the contract and not go with them in the following years?
I have not looked at that issue.
Well, I, you know, I hear, again, to reiterate, we really won't know how good a job's done till board of review is completed. You know, we may have an outstanding job. If not, then that's when we would take a look. But next year will be a maintenance consideration. After that, the contract's over, you know, where we choose to put it out for proposals, which I'm assuming the council will want to do at that time period.
Well, at this point, I'll, it's a motion that we recommend the approval of the extension to October thirtieth, and we include the provision, A, that if the contract works not completed by October thirtieth, there's a penalty of a hundred and fifty dollars per day.
Second.
How about section B?
And B, that they reimburse the city for the cost of the public notices.
Okay. There's a motion. Is, was there a second?
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
I'm in favor, but I think we should increase the fee. I'll still vote yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. At this point, we need a motion to go into closed session.
See.
What did I forget?
New business seat.
I'm sorry. Recommendations from the Ad-Hoc Deer Committee. You have a issue sheet in front of you. Randy, do you have anything you want to add?
I don't, but Tom Rinder is here, Chairman of the Committee. I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Does anybody have any questions? I guess the biggest issue or change that we're having is we go from a hundred and fifty to a hundred feet. Is that right, Tom?
I'm sorry.
From a hundred and fifty feet last year to a hundred feet this year.
That's the-
Everything else is-
Recommendation.
Yep, that was a committee recommendation. I don't think there's any other changes. There's no charge to the city?
There's, no, there's no charge to the city. There's basically four recommendations coming from the committee. The first one is to allow the hunt for the entire bow season. And then the other three are, continue the herd management program with RBDM in the future until such time as the herd returns to normal or manageable levels, then establish a monitoring program, continue to have the Hudson Police Department perform background checks on new hunting personnel, and the committee said biannual checks on existing hunting personnel. The chief recommends annual checks, and I think that's a very good recommendation. I would support that. And then also the hundred-foot separation distance from a house instead of the hundred and fifty feet. Those are the four recommendations.
And that hunt goes from September seventeenth till January thirtieth?
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
I move for approval based on those four recommendations.
Is there, go ahead.
Just make a comment. You've got, continue the management program in the future. We don't know what they're going to propose in the future in terms of cost and so forth. I'd say that probably should be considered at-
On an annual basis?
Yeah. I mean, that's a decision that you don't need to make for this year's, and I think you'll need to see what they propose for next year.
So you want to have that, say, continue annual reviews?
Yeah, that would always be subject to the council review and approval each year.
You want to amend your motion to include that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Excuse me, Mayor. There's one other thing that I'd like to bring up, and this came from Councilmember Morissette at the committee level, that something be placed in the paper about private citizens not being allowed to go out and shoot bows and arrows in their backyard. And I don't know, Randy, you want to expound on that?
Well, I just, at the last meeting when we've discussed this management program, a gentleman was interested and asked us if he could hunt in his own backyard. We said no, you can't do that. That's not what we're looking out after, so I brought it up to make sure that we at least put it on our website, and the paper does something. And whoever else out there says it is not legal for any resident to discharge any firearm in, in the city.
Yeah, the city has very good ordinance regarding firearms and bow and arrow by private citizens within the city limits.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
At this point, we're, any communications for our future agenda items from?
Can we vote Nancy?
Pardon? We didn't vote, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I thought we did vote. I'm sure we voted.
I would like to add the preliminary findings of the IT Committee as a-
We'll get back to the closed session, but you want to talk about ITs?
Yeah, on our next agenda, I think we'll be ready to, we're going to meet again, and I think we'll be ready to chat a little bit of our findings.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other alter person?
I had just one comment. I had a thank you note from the St. Croix Historical Society for our donation. They said they've been fairly busy this summer with tourists from several different states. We're busy with the garden tours, Civil War reenactment day, as you know. We offer octagon house tours, City of Hudson tours, tea tours, and school tours, tours. Fall brings eighth grade tour, and are planning the Christmas season. So that's a thank you to all of us for their, for our donation. City Attorney, City Administrator.
We may, probably will be in touch concerning a special meeting to address that temporary license that we had to pull from the agenda tonight, but we haven't received an official request from them yet, so.
Should we try and set a date right now?
It'll be a five-minute meeting.
Five-minute meeting.
What temporary license?
The Hockey Association did not meet the five-day requirement.
We do an early morning?
That's up to you.
What day is work, what day works best for you?
I mean, the event is not until the seventeenth, so it could be even next week, if that were, you know.
Safety will be here at five on Thursday, if you want to jump in five minutes before that.
If I could get there five minutes before that, I would agree to that.
I'm out of town.
I'm out of town next week.
Can we do a quick thing first thing in the morning before everyone?
You mean tomorrow?
No, just my number.
Probably need to be later in the week, just, well, we'll have to have the five business days, which would be-
They've already applied, correct?
Yes.
Friday, it was Monday, Tuesday, Friday.
Friday would be the earliest we could have.
And as far as that goes, we don't all have to be.
Correct. We just would need to have a quorum.
I can do any morning.
I'm not available Friday. Following Monday?
Morning.
We have a seven-thirty meeting here for Industrial Park, so.
Seven-twenty?
Sure.
Seven-twenty on Monday?
Which is the?
Twelfth.
Twelfth.
Should take five minutes. And then if we do not hear from them, we'll let you know.
Is there anyone here that can't be here, so at least we have a quorum?
I can do seven. I can't do seven-twenty.
Okay, so Lee won't be here. Everybody else okay?
You're out of town, John?
I'm here on Monday.
Okay.
All right. We'll find out seven-twenty then on Monday.
I'll come in my pajamas.
No.
I'm just kidding.
Don't matter to me.
All right, now we have a closed session. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So both.
Is there a second? Roll call?
Wyland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Haggert?
Yes.
Vanslo?
Yes.